I'm Rachel Britton, I'll be moderating this evening. Thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.[36.47][36.47](APPLAUSE). For those of you that know me from another context, I'll be talking decidedly slower this evening, so don't worry about that.[45.55][45.55](LAUGHTER). However, the candidates have to answer their questions in one minute, so you may hear some accidental auctioneering from them.[52.51][52.51](LAUGHTER). I want to also, I want to take this opportunity to thank the sponsors of this event. There are four co-sponsors: the American Association of University Women, the Willets Environmental Center, Mendocino Women's Political Coalition, and the Willets Economic Localization.[74.81][74.81](APPLAUSE). A big thank you to those groups who are putting this evening together, and also a note that those groups have worked together to create some of the questions that we'll hear tonight. Questions from our event sponsors and the audience will be heard. So, if you have questions, please write them on the three-by-five cards that were provided at the front. If you need a three-by-five card, you can put your hand in the air and Janine will bring you a three-by-five card. Janine's right here to my right. Can you put your hand up so they can see you? Questions from the audience will be brought up here to our wonderful question team. Cindy and Diane will take your questions, and they'll be consolidating for redundancy, and then handing those questions to me. Each of the candidates will be given two minutes to give us an opening statement, and then we'll move into the questions. We'll hear six questions that have been selected by our four sponsors, and the remaining seven questions will come from the audience. The candidates will be given one minute each to respond to each of the questions. The questions will be answered in rotating order. So whoever answers the question first will, then the next person will answer the next question first, and so on. So that who answers the question first will be rotating every time. All right, are we ready, folks?[164.81][164.81](LAUGHTER). More importantly, are you guys ready?
Let's do it.
I'd like to create a sort of game show feel, so let's go for that.[172.15][172.15](LAUGHTER). Okay. Let's see here. So, we have opening statements, and we'll be beginning with Jeremy, and we'll head on down the line. So Jeremy, please share with us what you would like to open with.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight, I really appreciate that. My name is Jeremy Hirschman, I'm 37 years old. I've lived in Willets for a little over nine years now. Some of that time I lived in Brook Trails, but now I live here in town. I've worked in the community the whole time I've lived here. I started off running my own business as a mobile equipment mechanic, going out to sites around the county, working on bulldozers, generators, digging equipment, that kind of stuff. I'm a veteran of the United States Army, and now currently I'm enrolled in the math program at Mendocino College, at which I'm also a supplemental instructor, teaching college algebra and statistics. I think I'm the right person for the city council because in my time as a technician, I led a lot of repair crews and did a lot of training exercises with large teams. I also dealt a lot with overall job site maintenance, projects that had to be brought in on time and on budget, often with large construction projects really hanging in the balance. I think that this experience has taught me a lot about how to make compromises when necessary, and how to work well with a group that has not necess, that might have slightly competing interests. I take, I take governance and civics very seriously, and I'm already, as a hobby, I currently study a lot of things that are important to our town: small-scale urban development, moving into new emerging business markets, and things of that nature. And I plan on bringing that with me to the city council if I'm elected. I want to work to bring the future that we all want to this town: economic sustainability, you know, a nice, a nice destination for folks to visit from different parts of the country, a place where they can come and have a unique experience. We have a nice group of folks here, and I'm happy to be a part of this town. Again, I'm Jeremy Hirschman, and vote for me on November 6th.[301.33][301.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Jeremy. Greta?
Hi there, I'm Greta Conny. I am 45 years old, I feel like I have to say that since Jeremy dished.[313.44][313.44](LAUGHTER). I own the book juggler with my husband Chris, right there on Main Street. I recognize a lot of you, I'm sure you recognize me from there. I grew up in Willets, I was a summer kid on the back of Sherwood Ranch, so I have a long history with this town. I decided to run for council because a lot of people have asked me to run, and I love our town. I'm currently on the Revite Ed Committee with the city. I've been very involved with Main Street planning, and I want to see us get through this transition difficult time that our community is facing, and I see bright days ahead for us. So I appreciate you coming out tonight, and I appreciate your support, and even if you don't vote for me, make sure you vote. Thank you.[359.99][359.99](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name is Larry Stransky, and I moved to Willets in 1964 to teach woodshop, and that, and then I did that for 35 years, and then I retired. I, in that time, the 35 years, I taught for the junior college, woodshop, and in about 1979, my wife and I bought a jewelry store, and I became a jeweler. And I taught that in high school also, was a very popular thing in the high school. I, for the junior college, I taught woodworking, and I was also a work coordinator. I am married and have two children, and four grandchildren, and I'm a member, I am a member of the Willets City Council. My experience was, is teaching. I was on the school board for the Willets Unified School District. I was a salary and health negotiator for the teachers. I was an advisor, I was also a laborer, and the labor was, I worked at the sawmills at, in the north part of town, in the summers, and also on the weekends to subsidize my income. I have a retail business, I'm a retail businessperson, I'm a jeweler, business owner, college instructor, and city councilperson. My priorities are to help the businesses in Willets to get back to their start, to rebuild, and to have the opportunity to do what they need to do to, to yet going. I want to work towards low and medium housing, and I want to make Willets a destination. That's it, thank you.[491.53][491.53](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Larry, and, and thank you for listening. I want to mention that before we move on to the actual questions, during the question portion, I'm going to ask that we hold our applause until the end, just to make sure that we maximize our time of hearing from the candidates. All right, this is our first sponsor question, and by way of rotation, Greta, you'll be the first person to answer this question. The first question from our sponsor is, what are your highest priority, are your highest priorities that you hope to accomplish during your term in office?
That's a tough one. I think one of the most important things the city needs to do in the coming years, hopefully next year, is updating the general plan. I would like to be on council to help approve that. I also think the city needs to make sure that we invest in Main Street, follow through with the Main Street Plan that was adapted unanimously by past city council. And I do think that we need to work towards improving and creating more housing in Willets. I think the recent pass of the new housing element is a great first step, and we need to do more.
Thank you, Greta. Larry?
I want to help Main Street to grow back to the way that it was, and I don't know if that's possible, but that's one of my priorities. I would also like to have all of the businesses, and I think that can happen, and I'll talk about that later on in, in the evening. I think that being a business owner is something that, that was unique for me on the council. For a long time, I was the only one that was downtown that had a business, and that helped me to have business hours for the public, and they could just come in and say whatever they wanted to say, and, and hopefully, we could have a discussion later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Jeremy, what are your highest priorities that you hope to accomplish during your term in office?
So, I believe that economic sustainability is really the, needs to be the main focus of the city moving forward. We're entering into a really stark transition period here, and I think that it's going to be really vitally important that we encourage the entrepreneurial spirit that we have here in Willets. We have a lot of really talented individuals that, I think if given an opportunity, could really help us build this town: bringing products, products to market, providing services for folks that come through and want to take a visit. I've been looking at a lot of programs, like community land trusts, and economic gardening programs, that help to build up businesses and provide them some of the services that perhaps they don't even realize that they're missing. Economic gardening, for instance, provides targeted marketing and geographical, provides geographical data, so that businesses can be more efficient in how they spend their dollars. That's economics, is definitely my main priority.
Thank you. Next question, Larry, you'll be the first to answer this question. What concerns do you have regarding a mental health facility in Willets?
That's interesting, because I've been going to all of the Measure B meetings in Ukiah with the advisory committee, and at first, we were led to believe on the council that there was a, a place for it in town. But as we have progressed, we have found that there are several places that are probably more suited, and also, it's, for the initial, mental health is one of the things that all of the counties and all the cities have that are not in common. If you have a facility that is going to help somebody in Covelo, we cannot do that at one, one location. We have to have several, one in each community. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, and Jeremy.
So far, the update from the Measure B Committee, as far as I understand it, is they have one proposal on the table from an agency that already provides family and children's services in the county. That proposal has not been passed on to the county, but it does not include anything happening inside the town limits of Willets. Now, that's one proposal, and I'm sure there's going to be more to come. I'm not against having a facility in the town limits, I think that it's a good job providing opportunity anywhere that it would be in the, in the county, and I think that it provides a very valuable service. Yeah, so I think that until the Measure B Committee receives more recommendations and has a clearer stand on that, it's really kind of out of our hands as a city council, as a city council.
Thank you. Greta?
The concerns I have about psychiatric health facility in Willets include how that will impact our neighborhoods, our schools, and our police department if they are the responsible party for dealing with residents of the facility who have been released. I think that there, as Jeremy said, there is no set proposal on the table for a facility in Willets, and so taking a stand one way or the other on a particular facility is putting the cart before the horse. But I do think that our council is doing a good job of staying up to date with what's happening at the Measure B Subcommittee, and we have a couple of local residents who are regularly attending those meetings, and making sure that our community knows what's happening and what might happen in Willets. So I think we need to keep an eye on it, and that's the end.
Thank you. Next question, Jeremy, you'll be the first to answer this. You have all stated that you support the city's current ordinance on commercial medical cannabis businesses. Would you support extending allowable uses from medical use only to include adult recreational use as well? And would you support allowing such businesses in all of the city's industrial and commercial zones?
Yes.[888.98][888.98](LAUGHTER). I think that it's, I think that we've seen over the past few years with what's happened in Colorado, Washington, and Oregon, that cannabis legalization is not this demon that some folks thought it might be. It's actually proven to be a boon, especially to many small communities. I really feel like any business that's willing to operate within the confines of the law, we should be, you know, almost welcoming them with open arms in Willets, to a point.[917.82][917.82](LAUGHTER). I think it's, yeah, I think it's time for us to take our position. I mean, for 50 years, the people in this town sacrificed because most of them thought that cannabis was okay. And now, that thought is actually permeating across the country, over 30 states now, where they've kind of taken up the same stance that we have. And I think that it's important that we take our place, and use the, use that opportunity to help generate a new tax base for the community.
Thank you. Greta?
I would support the expansion of an ordinance to allow adult use, as long as it were limited. I think currently, the ordinance is written allows three dispensaries. I think that's plenty. I know some folks will disagree, but I think that limitations are reasonable.
Thank you. Larry?
I think it's part of what will, will make Willets a destination, but I also think that the one thing that's going to be, that is going to do it more, is the Redwood Park that, if everybody has read the paper, this is going to make Willets the destination. It's, people from Marin and Sonoma are going to take over the railroad, and it's going to come to Willets, stop in Willets. The people will get out, and then they will take this trail up to Eureka. And this is going to be something that we, as a, as a community, need to stand behind, and to be able to have the facilities and everything to do what we need to do. And I understand from the Maguire people that the money is appropriated to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next question. Greta, you'll be the first to answer this. What concerns do you have regarding the quantity, quality, and safety of the city's water supply? And what solutions to these concerns do you envision?
Well, I just toured the wastewater treatment plant yesterday. I didn't get to the actual water facility. I think that our, I think a lot of people like to complain about Willets water. However, I think that we meet state standards, and in the last couple of years, our water supply has actually gotten better. I was talking with Scott Herman yesterday, who told me that they have recently, about two years ago, switched the chemicals that they were using. Our water now has a longer time of treatment, and uses less chloride than ever. The state is actually asking them, what are you guys doing? Because this is so much better than it has been. And I think a lot of people in our community don't realize that. I don't, I don't know what I would do to change things, I would have to learn more about it.
Thank you. Larry?
I think that the watershed is part of the solution, and also, I don't know anyhow anything could go wrong with as many checks as we have at the watershed, to go through the facility, the, all of the things that it has to go through, all the checks that it had to take, and then it comes to us. We also have one well that's online, and a second well that's coming online this next year. And so, we should never have another drought in the, actually in the city of Willets, because we have ample water for what we have in the population-wise. And that will work pretty well for the realm of influence of, of opening up the areas around Willets to have more housing and more other things that are happening. Thank you.
And Jeremy?
So I think it's a good use of resources for the city to explore other options. The wells that we're drilling out in the valley, I think that's a great way to kind of gird ourselves against future situations where we may run into a shortage. I also agree with Greta that I think that the Willets water is actually not that bad. I mean, that's what I got right here. So, yeah, I think that our folks are doing a pretty good job, but I would have to definitely learn more before I, before I decided if I thought there was any changes that needed to be, needed to be made.
Thank you. Next question, and Larry, you'll be the first to answer this question. Do you support the establishment of creekside setbacks, which would restrict building and development within a certain distance from the banks of creeks within the city? Larry?
Yes, I do. I think that they need to happen for the simple reason that we need to have as much safety as we can, and also, this is a zoning ordinance that, in the city, that we have tried to accomplish. The one thing for the setbacks is, a lot of different things happen with all of the underground things and whatever that, that go in, and there's a right away, and if, if, I, I don't know exactly what to say, but the setbacks are good. Actually, when you have a sidewalk that's in front of your house, it, you are responsible for it, but the city has all of their water and sewer and everything in that particular area, and that's what I think is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Jeremy?
Yes, I support setbacks from creeks and rivers, absolutely, especially for any type of commercial or residential development. I think that we've seen in recent years here in town especially, that when we do have large water flows, the banks of our creeks changed fairly significantly. I know Mill Creek runs right behind my house, and I can see just from the last, just from this past winter, like, there was quite a bit of washout, and quite a bit of debris that washed up on the, on the side of the creek. And I know that, I mean, I think it's prudent to kind of, in that instance, almost save people from themselves a little bit. I mean, I know everybody wants to have their house right up on the water, but if it's, you know, if you're looking at a situation where you have an unstable foundation, or, you know, you might be getting some runoff into this creek that is a watershed for salmon or something like that, then yeah, absolutely, it's, it's a good idea to have the setbacks.
Thank you. And Greta?
Yes, I do.[1331.47][1331.47](LAUGHTER). I think setbacks are good for property owners, they're also good for the health of our creeks and waterways.
Thank you. And our final question from the sponsors here, Jeremy, you'll be the first to answer this question. Several cities have tree preservation ordinances that require residents to obtain a permit before removing certain trees. Do you support such an ordinance for the city of Willets?
Excuse me, would you say that again, please?
Yeah. Several cities have tree preservation ordinances that require residents to obtain a permit before removing certain trees. Do you support such an ordinance for the city of Willets?
I have a really strong sense of personal property. I also have a really strong sense of social justice. I don't know, if you've got, I mean, I want to say, sure, for, you know, if you've got this many hundred-year-old tree that has become a fixture of the community, then, you know, absolutely, maybe we should have some discussion if you, you know, you think that you need to remove it. Is it a hazard, you know, are you looking to expand your, maybe you're putting in a multifamily home, you know, maybe you want to expand your business? I mean, there's, there's an issue like that, I don't think is just, is so black and white as just having, you know, as just saying to people, oh, no, you know, you can't cut that tree down, that's on your property. I think that's, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah. Definitely, definitely I would need more consideration on that.
That's a tough one. Chris and I had a sycamore tree in our front yard on North Street, and it was probably about, maybe 10 years old. It was creating a lot of problems with the drainage in our neighbor's driveway. We opted to have the tree removed, and we had some neighbors who were very upset, and we even had a arborist who told us he wouldn't remove it because it was a healthy tree. It was the wrong tree in the wrong place. It was a beautiful tree, but we made a difficult decision, and for us, it was the right decision. If I, if there had been an ordinance that we weren't allowed to remove a tree, or we had to go plead our case before city council, it would have made it more difficult. But I'm also a tree lover, I was a horticulture major at Cal Poly, and I do feel that there are certain heritage trees that probably shouldn't be removed because they're of value for the whole community. So that's a tough one. I think it's all theoretical at this point, but it would need some thought.
I think that we need the ordinance also, and I think that it's something that, that needs to be studied, and it needs to have an arborist come out and look at it, and we need to have the trees, and, and just the natural trees that you have in your yard, I think that, that they need to have an arborist, and, and that's the, the problem, is that people do not take care of their trees in their yards. We have a large lot in the city, in town, and we have an arborist and people that come out once or twice every couple of years to look at our trees, to make sure that they're healthy. And I just feel that, that that's a really good thing to do, and I think that everybody should do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, sponsors, for those questions. And I also want to thank you, candidates, for being so respectful of our time limitations. The next question is our first question from the audience. It's not too late to write a question if you still have a question, and feel free to put your hand up, and Janine can collect those. This first question is, if you become a city council member, what are the chances trees will be replanted on Main Street, South and North? Rec Grove, before existing trees are cut down? And would you make downtown pedestrian-friendly? So, this is a really limited question.[1582.11][1582.11](LAUGHTER). Since you were doing such a great job respecting the time format, we decided to challenge you.
Thanks, appreciate it, Rachel.
Yeah. Greta, you'll be the first to answer this question.
Well, I'm on the Tree Committee, which is part of Revite Ed at the city, and we've identified five species that we think are fantastic choices for Main Street. I will do everything in my power if I sit on the city council to make sure that we plant trees on Main Street. Our current plan asks for six to eight trees per block, and I think trees make a city livable, they make it welcoming, they make it wonderful on a hot July afternoon. I'm your tree gal.
Thank you. Larry?
I think that the, that the landscaping that they have done for the paving and whatever is, is the right way to go, and I'm on the city council now, and if there's anything that comes up about trees, we definitely have a discussion. And it's a real hot-button issue with the community, and I think that we've had enough discussions in the city. And the one thing that I did this time is, for the first time, we have water in front of the trees. I don't know how many years that this city has planted trees and never had water to water the trees. And this year, we have water right in front of the curb. And I was one of the people that said that I wouldn't even go for it if we didn't have water, and we need to have the right kind of tree and water it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Larry? Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy.[1694.11][1694.11](LAUGHTER). I got so excited.[1696.76][1696.76](LAUGHTER). Or perhaps it's because I already heard you speak about trees. Please, go ahead.
I agree with Greta a bunch on that. Like, I think trees make a city welcoming. I agree that, you know, the shade, especially here, we have very hot summers, and shade trees are gorgeous, and, I mean, yeah, sitting out in front of our Dellas under the shade of a tree while you're waiting for your table in the morning was one of my most cherished memories of Willets. I mean, meeting and talking to people as everybody went about their business. So, yeah, I, the Rec Grove, for sure, more trees. City parks, more trees. Main Street, more trees. The Main Street Plan has an excellent, excellent layout of how they want it. I think that they're doing a great job on the Revite Ed for, for getting the tree, getting more trees out there. Yeah, trees, trees, trees. I like trees, too.
Thank you. Next question, and Larry, you'll be the first to answer this one, and I will give you an opportunity to answer it as well, Jeremy.[1751.47][1751.47](LAUGHTER). Larry, this question is, how will you make sure Latinos and other minorities will receive equal treatment?
In what context?
Well, it's an audience question, Larry, so I don't know that I can add the context. So I think what you'll have to do is choose the context you'd like to answer it in, and then clarify that.
You're talking about minorities. I, I didn't know that we had a problem with that, because everybody that has ever come in front of the city council has been heard, whether they are on the agenda or not, there's a, a community forum- a community forum at the front where anybody can bring up anything that is not on the agenda and then if it is thought that it is something worthwhile and two members of the council feel this, they can go to the the city manager and say, I would like this put on the agenda and it's it's on one of the agendas, maybe not the next week, but in in the couple of meetings, there should be, you know, this topic should come up and I I really don't think that that there's a problem. Sorry.
Thank you, Larry. Jeremy?
I was, I'm from a small agricultural community and my mother is a teacher, so I was raised from a very early age that you judge folks by their actions and by the content of their character and that's it. I would definitely pursue any instance of discrimination or or if there was, you know, some type of alleged thing or something like, I would definitely try to pursue that to a full, to a full conclusion that was that was satisfactory to the person who was, you know, who suffered that injustice. I mean, I kind of agree with Larry in the sense of I feel like our community is really open and I I personally haven't encountered nearly as many of those types of situations where minorities have been pushed pushed down here as I have in other places of this country and and that's great, actually. But I definitely think that it's important that if that type of, if those types of things are happening, that we do our absolute level best to make sure that it doesn't happen again and we redress the issue immediately. Thank you.
Greta? I don't know what the exact numbers are in city of Willets limits, but I understand that Latinos make up approximately 25% of our population countywide. I would love to see city of Willets put out agendas in English and Spanish. I personally paid extra to make sure that my candidate statement in the sample ballot was printed in English and Spanish.
Thank you, Greta. Next question, Jeremy, you'll be the first to answer this question. Do you think the city should be contributing to meeting the state's greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets and if so, how?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah. Do you think the city should be contributing to meeting the state's greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets and if so, how?
So I think the city should be working to reduce its energy consumption and its pollution emitence regardless of what the state has going on. I believe in efficiency is better and if we can find, if there's a way to do something better that uses less energy, that releases less greenhouse gases, that is more cost-effective, then absolutely, we should be participating in that, whether the state says that's the right thing to do or not. To accomplish that, definitely look at the cost of perhaps hybrid vehicles for any any city vehicles that needed to be taken care of. We're doing a great job with the the power, the electric vehicle charging station that we just put in. I think that it is important that we work as an entire community to take care of the environment. I mean, it is the only one that we have and it will go on without us.
Greta?
Yes, I think the city should be doing everything it can to reduce its carbon footprint. I would encourage us when we needed to replace vehicles for the city's fleet to make sure that we got vehicles that were as had the highest mileage possible. I think we should look into solar power. I think the city should do everything it can to make sure that we are responsible and that we are setting a tone in our town for how we use energy.
And Larry?
I think that that's very true. I agree with both of them. The the carbon print that we have in the city with, we have the solar plant up at the water plant, we have talked about it for the sewer plant, we also have a portion that we could turn over to windmills. I think the electric cars are a good item that that we need, although in a rural area, it's a little harder because we have to go the great amount of miles and so cars like pickups and large vehicles that don't get as much mileage as other vehicles, younger younger vehicles, smaller vehicles, they, I just think it's a good idea and I think that the city should do everything they can to make it happen for us.
Thank you, Larry. Next question will be answered by Greta first. Considering you will be asked to uphold the Constitution of the U.S., how do you view the current dismantling of the Constitution by Trump, the Republicans and the oligarchy?
Wow. Wow. I'm fun with that.
Wow?
One minute here, Greta.
I appreciate whoever wrote that question. I'm not sure it's pertinent to city council. I think if I understand correctly, the issues that will be directly before us on city council deal mainly with our city's infrastructure and how we as a community can make sure that we live up to our nation's highest ideals. So I think it starts at home, we do what we can here to uphold the Constitution, to respect our community members, whether they have the same ideas as us or not, and that's what I think I have to say to that question.
Thank you, Greta. Larry?
I think that it's really a tough question and and the whoever wrote it, I don't know where you're coming from, but okay, I just think that as a group of people, that I'm not aware of anything that is happening like that and as a person on the council, we we really don't have a lot to say about that and because things happen in federal state and federal government and they're just mandated to us. Now, whether we like them or not, is one thing or another and if you want to protest it, I guess you can protest it, but you don't have a lot to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Jeremy?
When I joined the Army, I swore to uphold the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. It's an oath I take seriously and it's something that I still am committed to to this day. Again, how the, what's playing out in the national scene really applies to us here in Willets and the city council in particular, I'm not really sure, but I guess know that I don't agree with really any of those policies personally and I guess, yeah, I I agree with you that it's a travesty. Other than that, I mean, I don't, I'm I'm voting, that's that's the best I can do, so do your part as well.
Thank you, candidates, for taking that one on. Larry, you'll be the first to answer this next question. Could Willets have a facility for Alzheimer's and dementia patients?
Yes, you can. The hospital, the Howard Foundation has has come up with, talk into the talk with Measure B to have a facility beside the hospital, the new hospital and I think that it it's going to happen that way for the simple reason, as I stated before, what happens in mental health in Covelo is not the same thing that happens in Ukiah or Willets or Fort Bragg or Point Arena. Each one of these places have an individual concept and population that's different than the others and to make it work, we're going to have to have a facility in each one of these places and then from there, it can go on to something, I mean, if they need lockdown or whatever, then that that happens later. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yes, I don't, I don't see why there shouldn't be a facility that of that type that operates in Willets. I think that it would be a boon to the community, especially members that are dealing with those difficulties and, you know, don't want to have their family members out of the area. I know that that was something that I deal with in my own personal life with my family back home and trying to figure out my father-in-law who's ill and what we're gonna, you know, how we can handle that situation and still make it to where the family can participate with him as easy as possible because, you know, it's, he's still our dad, we still love him. So, yeah, I definitely think that that, I mean, I I wouldn't be opposed to that in any way if if one of the Howard Foundation or any other reputable group that that had access to the type of things that needed to be done for those types of care, yeah, if they wanted to get going in Willets, I would support that for sure.
Thank you. Greta?
I think that would be a great thing for Willets. We have an aging population, it's a concern for a lot of people and if we could be a full-service community, I think that would be fantastic. I didn't know about the proposal near Howard Hospital, would like to learn more about it. I think it sounds like a good idea.
Thank you. Next question and Jeremy, you'll be the first to answer this one. The Village of Mendocino has a very nice little cannabis bar next to a dispensary. Is Willets as a destination for cannabis experience and education part of your vision?
Absolutely. I think that, you know, we've got a decent start here with just the folks living in the area, the producers that are doing a great job. I don't see why in a few years, we couldn't be looking at expanding the extension at Mendocino College to provide training for some of the testing and the science that's that's going on right now with cannabis. I think that it is one of the biggest tools that we can use to leverage Willets as a tourist destination. I don't disagree that the Redwood Trail is going to bring folks in, I think that the Roots of Mode of Power brings people in, I think that our parks and our location brings people in, but I I think that this can kind of be a cohesive glue. I know that when my family visits from out of state, my my own parents, you know, they wonder, why, why, why can't I access this in Willets? This is, I mean, this is, you know, this is what California, this is kind of part of the experience now and so, yeah, I think it's an integral part of Willets moving forward.
Thank you. Greta?
As I said earlier, I I do think that we should have a recreational dispensary. It should be at least one of the three that we offer here, if it's a solid business plan, if it's approved through the permitting process, if the community wants it and supports it. I I know cannabis is a huge part of our community and has been the backbone of our economy for a long time. I also know that there's a lot of split feeling in our community about cannabis and I don't think it's a great idea to put all of our eggs in one basket and label ourselves as the pot town. Becoming a tourist destination, I think, needs to be a little bit broader than than one crop.
On the council, I have, when all of this came up and there were a subcommittee that came up with a different ideas for cannabis and I voted for the medical marijuana and I think that there's some real assets to the medical part of it. I'm totally not, totally convinced of just the recreation and I also think that it won't be the magic bullet that everybody else thinks it is. I think that it it has a place in Willets because it's, we've been raising cannabis for 45 years here and anybody that doesn't think that, I was teaching woodshop when we had people, that's not long enough for my answer, but anyhow, the thing about it is that that I think that that the rail and trails thing for the Redwood Trail is going to be just as big as the cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, we have two more questions here, we've decided to add another question because we have a bit more time, because our candidates have been so respectful. So two more questions here and on this next one, Greta, you'll be our first to answer. Excuse me, no laughing on the stage. I'm kidding. The next question, beginning with Greta. What are your thoughts regarding homeless people in our community and what can the city do to facilitate their needs?
Are you sure it's me? I feel like I've been going first a lot.
I'm really confident it's you, actually.
Somebody asked me this question recently, how do you feel about homeless people? I think homelessness is a horrible thing. I can't imagine how scary and awful it would feel to not have a home to go home to, to be under a bridge, to be in a car, to not have a safe, warm space full of books to go home to. I do believe that our county is working hard to address this issue. I think all of us have recently talked to
Maya Stewart.
Maya Stewart from the county's Continuum for Care, which is trying to do an inventory of homeless folks in our community. Oh, this is not long enough at all. From what I understand, our problem in Willets is not nearly as bad as it is in other parts of our county. I think that we should be doing what we can, of course, to help these folks. I've now completely lost the thread of the of the question, so I don't know that I've answered it all, but definitely, it's an issue we all should be working on addressing.
Thank you. Larry?
I think that that homeless is, we have a very small percentage of people that are homeless all year round. We have more at certain times of year that that want to be homeless, but they're migrants that come through and I think we have places to feed these people, we have places that that will help them. I just, it's, it's really sad to me to have, I can't imagine myself as being a homeless person and not having anything. I just really don't know what we as a community can do other than just do the very best that we can and I think we are doing a really good job so far. Thank you.
And Jeremy?
So compared to Ukiah, that's looking at, I think she said it was like 300 homeless people year round, essentially, 300 to 400 homeless people year round in the Ukiah general area. Willets here, we're dealing with around 40 folks that are perpetually homeless. I think it's, it's a real tragedy. We do do a pretty good job of feeding them, the Willets Food Bank and other programs in the area do a really good job of helping those folks when they, when they come and when it's available, but I would like to see the city do a little bit more. I don't know exactly how that should shake out. I think some of this might be kind of taken care of with, not taken care of, but dealt with when Measure B gets shaken out because I feel like some of our homeless issue probably crosses over with mental health and I think that as we move forward with those, with the Measure B committee and figuring out how that process is going to shake out, I think we'll get a clearer picture of what we can do as a city to help combat this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to our final question and then we'll have closing statements. Larry, I don't know if it's perfect or unfortunate that you're the first to answer this question, but here it is. What decisions have been made by the council over the previous four to five years with which you strongly agree or disagree? What would you have done differently? How would you handle your disagreement in general?
I think that the the freeway was really a good thing for the community. I noticed from where I am that it doesn't seem to affect the traffic that goes through town as much as everybody thought that it would. I think when we get the landscaping and all the things done that we're doing down Main Street will be definitely an asset to the community and I think that everybody will buy into it. The things that are that are not popular with the with the council, and I use this and I'll probably get a bad call on it, but I don't think that we have anything, any rights to do anything about rent control and that was one of the worst things I feel that that was brought in front of the council and they never got all of the people together to make a decision.
Thank you, Larry. And Jeremy?
So I agree with the Main Street plan. I think it was a great, I think it was a great plan and I love the way that the city council and the community kind of came together to to make that happen. You know, we were dealing with this transition period in our community where our thoroughfare was going to change hands and it was really kind of a unique experience, so that's definitely something that I absolutely agree with. Disagree, the Measure I thing that's coming up right now, I think, might be a little bit of cart before the horse, just because we don't have, it institutes a tax policy for recreational cannabis and there's not really any, there's no policy for those businesses to operate, really. What I would do differently there would be to kind of come together with a more of a comprehensive tax bill perhaps and a regulatory structure in the same instance so that it wasn't so, perhaps not so cumbersome and a little bit easier to so that it wasn't so, perhaps not so cumbersome, and a little bit easier to get through.
Thank you. And Greta?
I'm always surprised, when I go to city council meetings, how many of the decisions that are made are unanimous. I think, I think most people tend to think of city council meetings as being, you know, pretty hairy events where everybody's at each other's throats, and I just haven't seen that in Willets. I think our city council has done a good job of making good decisions for the community. I would agree that the unanimous support of the Main Street Plan was one of my favorite things. I was also really thrilled earlier this summer when the council unanimously voted to approve the vacancy abatement ordinance. As far as things I didn't agree with, I can't think of one right now. I know I have disagreed with pretty much every council member at some point or another, but I think that's part and parcel. You know, we don't all get everything we want all the time, and that's just reality.
Thank you. We'll now take two minutes each for closing statements. And because Jeremy went first on the opening statements, we'll change it up a little, and we'll have Larry, you go first on the closing statement, and then Jeremy, and then Greta. So this is two minutes to offer your closing statements to our audience.
I think Willets is really a nice place to be, and that's why that I'm living here, along with my wife and raised my family here. I think the number-one thing for me are the people. And that's, I think that they're the most giving people that any place I've ever been that I've been aware of, evidently. I mean, when I look at the years that I taught school, and all of the scholarships from this little community that were given to kids, young people, to go on to school, whatever it might be, a four-year school, or, just a really giving community. I think that the weather here is great. That's another thing that I think is really nice here. And I really think that, and I've got a lot of education in the last year on cannabis, and I really knew nothing about it. And I did some research on it, and I think that the medical part of cannabis is just a wonderful thing. I've had people that came to the store and said, "My, somebody in my family has seizures, and medical marijuana helped them out, so that they can go to school and not have the seizures." I also think, and I'm really excited about this new trail that is going to happen in Willets. And I also think that, as a community, we need to go to the county and come up with a realm of influence, and have the county and go with, in opening up the community to make it larger. And it's been hold, it's been held down long enough. And on November 6th, 2018, I hope that you would vote for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. And Jeremy, your closing remarks?
I love this town. It welcomed me with open arms, and it has treated me like family the whole time I've been here. The sense of community is phenomenal. The level of involvement of the community members is just bar none of any place that I've ever lived, anyway. And I just want you folks to know that I'm committed to doing the right thing, whatever that may be. I don't claim to know what that is, but I want to listen, and I want to hear what all you folks in the community have to say, and how you want this place to turn out. And I'm committed to, I'm committed to working with folks, and coming to, coming to decisions that will benefit the community as a whole. I'm committed to working on, to doing the extra legwork, and supplementing the staff to help them, help them execute their duties well. Assisting the grant writer in locating grants that maybe we could apply for to help develop business, you know, assisting the city planner in wrangling business owners, so that they can have some type of meeting for zoning development or something like, I mean, that's, I feel like it's important that, as a city councillor, you act as, not just an advocate for the city, but an advocate for the community, too, and help provide that synergy between the folks that, the folks who are making the decisions, and the folks who the decisions affect. Again, vote November 6th. Thanks.
Thank you. And Greta?
I, too, love Willets. I think Willets is really a fantastic place. My mom and stepdad live down in Southern California, and I go to visit them, and I always breathe a huge sigh of relief when I come home here. I think the last couple of years have been rough. I wouldn't totally agree with Larry's comment that the freeway has been great for our town. Our business has suffered pretty, pretty, pretty painfully. But I think that, I think that that happens in life, you know? Sometimes we have some dark days, and sometimes those days last a while. The trick is seeing through to the other side, and I think that is what Willets is doing right now. We're looking towards our future. We're looking at how to make this a place that the next generation can love as much as we have. I think things are going well right now. We've got a great city manager, who I'm really excited to have the opportunity to work with. I love Dusty in the planning department. I think that if these people have a council behind them, who is pulling in the same direction and looking for a good future for Willets, it's within our grasp. And I would love to serve on the council and be your voice. I hope that you will come out and vote on November 6th. And don't forget to vote yes on J. Support our firefighters, and give them a new firehouse.
A big thank you to our candidates for hanging in there with us and answering our questions. And thank you to everyone for being here.